Good evening. If you will, make sure you turn your phone completely off or put it on vibrate, do something, but please do not let it ring. Okay, at this time, we're going to have our guest Shirley Robertson of the Elder with the Cornerstone Church. She's going to give the invocation for us. Shirley?
Good evening to everyone. Can you hear me? I'm short, so. Let's bow heads, please. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come to you this afternoon, O God, first of all, to say thank you. We thank you for this day because this is the day that you have made and we will continue to rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you for this meeting that's about to begin, O God. We thank you for all the commissioners that's sitting in their rightful places and all the people that's in the building. As we go over the agenda, God, give them grace, give them wisdom, and give them understanding, and let them give the right answers that the community citizen wants to hear. We thank you for what you're going to do in advance. We give you glory, we give you honor, and we give you praise. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll call the November Board of Commissioners to order. I'm sorry. Thanksgiving was just last week, wasn't it?
That's right.
I tell you, when you get old, you forget what month it is sometimes, and I apologize for that. But it is December, so welcome to the December Board of Commissioners meeting. And we'll call it to order, and I'll ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and that'll be led by Chairman Rebols.
Chairman.
Yeah, this is, he's going to be acting chairman for one session.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I tell you, after state beat Carolina on Saturday, I mean, I just can't get over that. It's so much fun, but you get confused because we don't, neither team has won that many games, have we? Pretty much even.
I didn't see that so well, come on.
Yeah, all right. At this time, we're going to recognize our outgoing commissioner and also our county attorney, and I'm going to step down there.
This plaque says, "Presented to John Rebols, County Commissioner, Voeffer County Commissioners, in appreciation and recognition for your professional and dedicated service to Voeffer County from October 29th of 2019 to December 2nd, 2024." Thank you, John, for your service today. This one is presented to David C. Francisco, Attorney, our Voeffer County Attorney, in appreciation and recognition for professional and dedicated service to Voeffer County from December 30th, 2014 through December 31st of 2024. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're going to have the election of the chairman and the Katie was standing up, and I should have known why she was standing up. This time, we'll have the oath of office for the commissioners that were recently elected in November. Katie?
You could all raise your, the ones that were elected, if you could raise your right hand. Do you solemnly and sincerely swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of the United States to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
Adieu.
Do you swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office as a member of the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners according to the best of your skill and ability according to law, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Take your seats.
Tandy.
You don't want your seat there.
Yeah, I'm going to get my bullets.
Oh, okay. Okay, the election of the chairman and vice chairman is next on the agenda, and I'll turn it over to Katie for the election.
Thank you, gentlemen. I will now take nominations for the position of chairman for 2025.
Madam Clerk, I wish to nominate Mr. Frankie Waters.
Katie?
Yes, sir.
I wish to nominate Senior Commissioner on this board, the most knowledgeable commissioner on this board, Phil Richardson.
Are there any other nominations? All those for Commissioner Waters, please raise your hand. All those for Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Waters, you're our chairman for next year again. We'll now move on to vice chairman. I'll take nominations for vice chairman.
Katie, I'd like to nominate Stan DeThridge for vice chairman.
I'd like to nominate Chair Langley for vice chair.
Are there any other nominations? All those for Commissioner DeThridge, please raise your hand. All those for Commissioner Langley, please raise your hand. Thank you. Any seat changes, chairman?
Brandy and Tandy. Okay, at this time, on the agenda, we have to discuss conflict of interest. Does anyone have a conflict? Hearing none, we'll move to the approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay, we're down to the items for presentation. That's the service awards. And Alors, if you will, come forward.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We have some Beaufort County employees here tonight to accept their service awards. We have David Palencia Garcia with five years of service from our sheriff's office. Next, we have Ms. Katie Mager with the county manager's office, and she has 10 years of We also have Tiffany Spruill from the Health Department with 10 years of service. I'd also like to acknowledge Amanda Johnson from Emergency Medical Services, who is not here tonight, but has five years of service with Beaufort County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the new school construction project. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dr. Cheeseman is here tonight to give the board a brief update on the construction progress at the new school, and then staff is seeking approval of the attached project budget ordinance, and we'll discuss that after Dr. Cheeseman speaks.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
Chair, what an exciting time it is for Beaufort County schools, as today we held our groundbreaking ceremony for what will be Washington Elementary School. And to remind some of you, and Commissioner Dunn, congratulations on your seat, but to remind many of you, this is a $42 million needs-based public schools capital fund grant, and we're very blessed to have been awarded that grant on February 7th by State Superintendent Katherine Truitt and her team. And we're also very thankful for the $10 million match. And so we're super excited to announce that Wimco, a builder right here in our county, right here in our community, longstanding since 1950, family-owned, will be constructing this new school. So, super excited to say that, in fact, this school is paid for by North Carolina lottery funds with some of your matching funds, and it is scheduled and still on time to open August of 2026. So we expect that after permitting and probably after the holiday, our community can start watching its progress in January, as the ground will start to move and foundations will start to be poured. We're very, very excited to say that come January, you're going to say next year. So, super excited about it, very thankful to our board, thankful to you, and right now we are on schedule. Any questions?
Questions?
Well, I have a statement to make.
Okay.
This presentation and the way this particular project was done, it has subverted the public interest in a tremendous way. No one in this room, other than that person, knows what we're building, why we're building it, what the benefits are going to be, how it's going to affect children, how it's going to affect your children and your grandchildren, whether there's adequate parking or not on this site, how traffic is going to be handled on this site. When you start cramming 900 up to the third grade in one building, you've got some special problems, and it remains to be seen how this project is going to work out. I don't think that we're going to be happy with this. The main objection that I, as an elected official, have to this is that the public was left out of the process, the public representatives were left out of the process, and I'm being asked, with one eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sheet of paper, as an elected official, to approve the construction of this project, and I know absolutely nothing about it. I have been consulted about it. No commissioner's been consulted about it. We have a failing school system. There's been nothing presented about how this is going to help this school system move forward, how this is going to educate your children. This is a subversion process, and I'm predicting that you are not going to be happy with this. And I have a lot of questions about what's on this piece of paper. There's only, to account for $52 million, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven lines. So, one of the questions, I have construction and demo. What are you demoing?
Eastern Elementary School, as previously explained to you.
What's going to happen to the other school?
That's a decision that the Board of Education will have to weigh in on. That's not my decision.
So there was no planning for the future of that school in this process?
That's a decision that the Board of Education will have to weigh in on.
We have furniture and fixtures. It looks like you're turning 2.3 million back to the county?
So, happy to address the, if Chairman would like for us to talk about the project ordinance. So, on page 12 and page 13 is the project ordinance. This is a project ordinance that's established to fund, recognize the revenues coming in and expenditures going out. Because the school and the construction, the bidding, came in under budget from what the architect had anticipated, we show the full revenues coming in, that's the $42 million in the needs-based grant, and then the $10 million from the general fund, that's the matching piece. And of course, based on those numbers going down, eventually, we will do our percentage, there's a percentage that comes out, so it's matched up against that. Then we have the expenditures, and those are broad categories that we normally use when we do construction projects. We are showing a transfer to the general fund of about $2.3 million. The reason we're doing that, we have to, the revenues have to balance the expenditures, and we're only allowed by law to have 5% contingency, which is 2.364955. So that's why we're showing that. There was, because the project came in lower than what we thought it was going to come in, we're showing 2.3 million being transferred back to the general fund. Obviously, that could fluctuate, it could be more if the numbers get better on things. It could be, there could be a little that comes out of that. There's contingency there. Our hope is that it stays on schedule and on budget, and that's the project ordinance that lays it out.
Now, that money's going to the county's general fund, not to the school board's general fund.
So, the money flows through the county and will go through us, yes. And the superintendent will explain, or I can explain, the way that process works from their side. They'll go through a review process with the architect, then to the superintendent, then to the Board of Education, and then that request for expenditure or that request for payment will come to the Board of Commissioners, and you will look at it and approve it, and then that allows us to flow the money out.
Well, this is one of the problems that I have with this. I've only been here in my eighth term. We have never built a school this way in Beaufort County. We've always come before the Board of Commissioners for approval of the plans, to at least look at the plans, and to discussions about how this was going to help the future of education in the county. This is one of the most high-handed things that I have ever seen done to the public in Beaufort County. And to say that I'm supposed to be a check approver for a project like this, there's a reason why this comes through the county, and that is, it's up to your elected officials, your county commissioners, as a part of the checks and balances in our governmental system, to see to it that your children are educated. And there's only been one person that I know of that knows what's going on, because the school board has been a rubber stamp in this process. And what I'm sitting here saying to you is, you are not going to be happy with this project when it's over with, because it is not going to work. 900 students in up to the third grade in one school is a very bad plan in a failing school system that is losing students. Why? Because of the mismanagement in the system. In order for democracy to work, the public has to be involved in these processes, and the people who are having their children educated need to be involved in these processes. It is not up to one man to make these decisions, who's not even a native of North Carolina. You're not going to like this project, and I refuse to approve this. I cannot vote for this. For one thing, I haven't been satisfied that parking plan has been worked out for people picking up children at this school. This board, it's an insult to this board that we have never even seen a set of plans, and this is because of the collusion among your elected officials. They are not serving you and your interest and your children's interest, and look at what's being taught and not being taught in our school system, and we're sitting here being asked to approve this. Children are not taught cursive writing, they're not taught classical mathematics, there's no religious element in our school system to amount to anything at all. It is a bad system, a bad plan produced by people who simply do not know what they are doing.
Commissioner Walker?
Not once did you say anything about the safety of the kids nor the safety of the staff. We've never built a school with lottery money because we've never had lottery money. Your comments are both predictable and ridiculous.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to say just one thing. Now, Hood's got a lot of opinions, he's been doing this a long time. Education certainly has changed since he went to school. I'm not so sure for the better.
No, not for the better.
But I will say this, I did coach soccer on that lower field for many, many years. Had some really good teams. Didn't know much about soccer, knew a lot about football and basketball, but I did know you ran up and down that field, and that field would get mighty soggy. In fact, some games, couldn't even play. You had to go find some, you didn't play that day. You had to let it dry out, you had a made-up game. That place where the school is going to be built is the collection point of all the water on that piece of ground. It's a very valuable piece of ground. I always wondered why the school board didn't think that, since they were getting this money, go find another piece of land, keep that piece of land, build your school on a higher place on the lot. I always thought, you always build your house on the highest point of the ground. Here, you're building it on the lowest point of the ground. I always thought, why didn't you guys do that? Find another piece of land outside the city, a little bit cheaper, and then, when it came time for you to turn that back into us, then we could sell it for a whole bunch of money, because that's a very, very valuable piece of real estate. But that was not considered. But what needs to be considered, before you go too far in this misadventure, that this piece of ground, where you're building this, you're going to have to spend a lot of site work, and I'm not sure it's still going to work. Now, I know the ground is outside the floodplain by a few mere feet, but there's a very high grade going up to John Smalley Avenue. And that all water, all that water rolls downhill, and it rolls to that collection point. And that's just the way it is on every piece of ground, doesn't matter how high it is, there is a high piece of that piece of ground. Always best to put your roads there, put your structures there, and then there's a low point, and that's where the water collects. So, I just was hoping that this would have been thought through a little bit more, but I guess it wasn't. Dunn.
Any other comments? Okay, I'd like to make some comments. I went to the groundbreaking this afternoon, and I had some comments, and I'll just take you back. This project's been on go for two and a half years, and it started when the state association had a summer meeting, and I attended the breakout session from the lottery. That's when they explained that the General Assembly had challenged them to build a new school in all 100 counties in North Carolina. So I came back, and I told Brian, I said, "Let's get together with representative schools, and let's see if we can't get a grant application." So we did the grant application. If you go back and read every word of the grant application, it answers a lot of the questions that's been raised by Commissioner Richardson. You know, it talks about, you know, why it was being done, it talks about the age of the school. Everything has been done according to the Department of Public Education, and also the school board, you correct me if I'm wrong, it was a unanimous decision on what they wanted to tackle in the application as it related to the schools in Beaufort County.
Yes, in terms of what they wanted to tackle.
And that was to merge and combine the two schools.
Actually, sir, the vote on the actual application was 8-1.
Right. These schools are 50 and 60 years old. So, one of the other things I told the public that was there this afternoon is, you know, when you talk about a $42 million grant, if Beaufort County was doing a school bond with the current interest rate and the way we've been doing them in the past, it would have cost the citizens, the taxpayers, $81 million, not just 42. We would have had to increase our tax rate 6.75 just to make the annual payment. It's an investment in our students, it's an investment in economic development. It's, I don't want anybody to get the wrong impression that we've just jumped into this thing, and we just, nobody's looked at it, and nobody's playing. I mean, we've had an architect, and we've got a homegrown company that is almost 75 years old. The architect's done schools before, they've got professional people on staff, so we're not doing anything stupid, as some people might say. So, I hope that we stay on schedule, and I hope that everybody will be proud of it once the school is finished. Mr. Chairman? Yes. None of the important questions that I've asked that have to do with the education of children and improving the quality of education in Beaufort County were addressed in this process. We have checked with DPI, and they have told our representatives that none of the studies that were required to be done have been done and submitted to DPI. This was entirely a political process to get Katherine Truitt elected. She came down here, she wanted to give some money away, she was running for office. And the community has not been involved in the future of education in Beaufort County insofar as children are concerned. One of the things that was not examined was whether or not we would be better off to use this money for community schools as opposed to the California method of consolidated schools, which we have pretty much shown has not worked, because our children are not getting educated from this, which is why our population in the school continues to drop. People are taking their kids out of school, out of public schools, and they're going to continue to take them out of public schools because of the poor quality of education. And part of the reason is this strong-arm dictatorial method with school boards going after parents for showing up at school board meetings, and even here in Beaufort County for 11 and 12 police officers being present at public meetings to intimidate the public. This is a bad thing. You need, the public needs to be aware that they are being robbed. Commissioner Booth?
I was ready to vote, you, but I want to say something. This money was not allocated for community schools. It was, that's the truth. It was designated to build a school, not to go around patching, as Commissioner Langley used to say. Another thing I want you to know, if any of you would go out and visit that school, I would tell a few years ago, the kids had to go outside to go to a bathroom. Is that modern school? Is that the kind of thing that will help you improve your education, when you got to walk through the rain, the cold, to go to the bathroom? And I am grateful. I hadn't been here when the bill of school, the last three, but I've been here along, all my life, and this is the first time anybody, since I've been here, came to Beaufort County and gave $42 million, and I ain't going to raise a whole lot of heck over it. I'm going to make sure it goes to some good use, and I hope y'all continue to stay on schedule and get those kids out of those dilapidated buildings and put that school where it needs to be, in the dump pile. where it needs to be, in the dump pile.
Commissioner Langley?
One of the most important things that everyone needs to consider is the children. What is best for our children? And what's the best environment that's conducive to learning? I mean, you think about anything. People get excited about whenever they get something new. Well, you know, beyond the newness of it, it's safety, period. I mean, the way that people are snatching other folks' children today, it's important to keep children together, where you can keep an eye upon them. We can't go back to what we used to do. We have to continue to move forward, and that's exactly what's happening with this school. We are taking a step forward. Anytime you want your county to grow, people, look at your educational system and what type of schools you have, because it's important. People are not going to allow their children to go in a sorry, broken-down school. So this is a great investment in our economy. So let's just simply continue to move forward, and let's always do what's best for the children, not what's best for the commissioner, not what's best for the school board, but what's best for our children.
Got any comments?
I do. I just want to really thank you for your support, and I really appreciate your commentary. And I welcome you, as I have for the last six years, to walk through our school anytime, which if not in my six years. And Mr. Dethridge, you've been in maybe a handful of times, but if you want to learn things, then I ask that you attend. And I ask that all of you show up, and you have, the majority, you have. So if you have questions, come ask them. Ask any board member. Come see me, come see our team, come work with the architect. If you have questions, come ask. But I do want to say, Beaufort County Schools is not on the designated low-performing list. You're not a failing school system. And Mr. Richardson, so what, that I'm not from here? I choose to be here, and I think that's the kind of guy you want, is the guy who chooses to be here. And by the way, all this rhetoric, I'm not from California. I'm from New Jersey, just outside of Philly. So get it straight when you write it, because the key thing is, we're going to fight for kids, and we're going to fight for our families, and we're going to fight for this community. And I'm a taxpayer here, too. I choose to live here. And with that, if you have any questions, come sit with me. And if you can't sit with me, come sit with one of our teammates, because the last time I checked, you were absent from the progress monitoring meeting that we had, and so were you, Mr. Dethridge. That's the last one. So the key piece is, you're doing what's best for children. And on behalf of our professional educators, how dare you say it's a failing school system, because every single teacher walks into that building every single day to do the best what they can for children. And to that, I appreciate all of you, your service and the work, but I'm telling you, I'm not going to stand here and let you just throw people down, because our educators work as hard as they can. And if you ever wonder why people don't come here, look in the mirror. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, Anita, do you or Brian have any anything to say as it relates to the budget ordinance?
Not unless there are any other questions, but this is the normal process in which we do a project ordinance to allow the money, to recognize the revenues and recognize the expenditures.
Okay.
And I'd further say that the auditor actually provided me with the template to go by.
I got you, I got you. Gentlemen, I entertain a motion to approve the capital project budget.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, all those opposed, raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is auditor's report. Anita?
We have a handout for you.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm proud to introduce Mr. Alan Thompson. He's a partner with Thompson, Price, Scott &amp; Adams. That's the CPA firm that performed our audit for fiscal year 2324. He's here tonight to present you with the results of that audit. I'll turn it over to him.
So you have in front of you a presentation summary. The main thing you hire us as an independent audit firm to do is issue an opinion on the financial statements as a whole. We issued unmodified report or a good report. And if you'd be kind enough to flip over to page one, I'll walk through some of the things I need to tell you about. On page one, on that first bottom part under qualitative aspects of accounting practices, there's three things, one in each paragraph, talking about appropriate accounting policies, accounting estimates, and disclosures in the financial statements. We were good with all three of those. There were no difficulties encountered in performing the audit. And then on page two, there were no uncorrected misstatements, no disagreements with management. Management did provide us with a representation letter dated November 6th, one where the management consulted outside accountants, auditors, et cetera. And then under other findings or issues, I'll talk about a prior period adjustments in just a second. And then there were a couple of technical errors in the Medicaid program that were identified as well. There were no question costs regarding those technical errors. And then on page four, to talk about the numbers just a little bit, I don't say these are all the key numbers in the audit report, but these are definitely some of the key numbers. And what we attempt to do to give you some context is put these, June 30, 2024, in this first column, and then to give you that context or ability to see a trend, put the four prior year's audit numbers there beside it. You can see total fund balance in your general fund at the end of June 30, 2024 is $44,001,004. If you go back to 2020, that number is $25,003,003. Unavailable fund balance is $6,090,000. The restricted is $18.2 million. Total general fund expenditures is $70.6 million. And then fund balance available as a percentage is 53.79%. And then unassigned fund balance is 25.8%. Unassigned fund balance as a percentage is 36.62. And then you see revenues over and unexpenditures for other financing sources. The general fund had a positive $5.5 million. Solid waste was $211,000 positive, and the water districts was a positive $165,000. You see total fixed assets there in your water at $89.8 million, with accumulated depreciation of $34 million, cash at $13 million, and then the general fund cash at $41.2. If you go back to 2020, you see that number is $25.3. Again, water district cash at $13,410,000, cash solid waste $1.1 million, and then other governmentals. Other governmentals has projects involved, so you can see a variation year to year depending on what the stage of the project is. So it could be high or low, depending on what the status of that particular project is. And again, you see general fund fund balance at 44.1, water districts at 37.1, solid waste net position at $1,947, and then other governmentals at $18.8 million. You see your property tax rates, collection percentage, collection percentages excluding motor vehicles, and then your total valuation, your levy amount. And then you see a breakdown of your debt, $39.2 million. You go back to 2020 at 53.2. You look at financial stability, growth, health. If you go to two numbers that would be positive to look at, if you look at the total, the top number, we already talked about, $44.1 million in general fund. You go back to 2020 at 25.3, a significant increase. You go back down to the very bottom, you see 2023's, or 2020's debt at 53.2, and the debt in 2024 at 39.2. So your fund balance going up and your debt going down is a good sign. On page five, you see by department a breakdown of your general fund revenues for all five years. The same thing's true of your general fund expenditures. In the current year, total revenues at $74.8 million, total expenditures at $69.2. And then you see a note there that there was, in '22, there's a big decrease in public safety because of ARPA funds being used to pay for some salaries, and that was the whole purpose of ARPA funds that the county received. On page six, you see in blue the trend I'm talking about with total fund balance. On the bottom there, you see the analysis of fund balance available compared to the group-weighted average. And then on page seven, you see your unassigned fund balance as a percentage of your general fund expenditures. And then on the bottom, you see analysis of revenues over and unexpenses before transfers for the three funds shown. On page eight, you see cash balances and fund balances there in the top in a pie chart with the respective numbers underneath that, total cash being $78.8 million and total fund balances being $102 million. And then on page nine, you see your property tax rates compared with your group-weighted average, and then the collection percentage compared to the group-weighted average. And then on page 10, you see a breakdown of your debt by type, whether it's governmental, general obligation, installment, governmental leases, or business type. So it has the percentages there as well. Then on page 11, you see a pie chart there with your general fund revenues. For most of your revenue, majority is abhorrent taxes, and that's why there's such a focus on it at 54.45%. And then your general fund expenditures, you can see education, human services, public safety are the big three down at the bottom. And then if you've been on the board for a while, you used to get unit letters. The state no longer issues unit letters. They give us what they want us to put in there, or give us guidance on how they want to put it in there. A couple of things on that, I mentioned prior period adjustment. These really aren't, it's a matter of moving ARPA money from one project to another project to make sure we get it, or it's gotten into the right spot. And then the second one was revolving loan recorded as loans instead of grants. And then the third one was, and I think last year, June 30, 2023, was the first year of leases, so the county had to go make an assessment of all leases it had, and then they had to be recorded, similar to assets and liabilities on the books. There was a couple missing, but the total, even though there's moving parts, the total change in it was only $278, but we still had to make it, get it done. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have of me, not just tonight, but anytime you got a question, just feel free to give me a call.
Anyone?
On page 12.
Yes, sir.
The, is that a general performance indicator? It says the unit had material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, statutory violations, or other items identified in the TD info completed by the auditor, and should be addressed in the FPIC response letter. And the answer to that is yes. So what are those?
The three things I just mentioned, those three prior period adjustments. That prior period adjustment, the adjustment on the revolving loan, and then the lease adjustment.
Oh, okay, that's what they are.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Well, you know, I have one comment on this. What I see in here, if you go to the expenditures, what I see is county expenditures are going up, they've gone up $12 million in five years. And what I see happening is that we're increasing our spending at the rate of $2.5 million per year over the average of this. And this is something that the board refuses to address and has failed to address, because we only spend 18 hours reviewing a $72 million or $70 million budget. Board's not working hard enough on these budgets. There's too much money going out the door and not enough oversight on the part of this board to hold expenses down. Anyone else have a question? Do you have any additional comments, Anita? Thank you very much. How many years have you been doing audit now? Is this the?
I don't know the answer to that, I'm sorry.
Is it the fourth one? Yes. Fifth one?
Sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to the public comments, and the first one is Leanne.
My name is Leanne Harsh. I'm here because in 2018, my house flooded in Florence. We immediately did all the paperwork we needed to do to get accepted for the FEMA grants that were available to raise houses. My understanding is we were accepted into the FMA Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant in 2019, and that grant sat on somebody's desk in the state, did not get turned in in time. So then it had to be resubmitted in 2020. And now my understanding, so in my head, we're a year behind. And now my understanding is, the money was actually approved, and the county has access to it since March, but it's still with the state. And I'm just curious as to what the holdup is and when we're going to see progress moving forward on the raising of my house and the other people who are part of this grant. I don't know if it's 10 or 20, but there's a good number of people that are a part of it as well. Waiting to see what's happening. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
The next one is Cornerstone. Shirley, are you going to do that, or?
Actually, I'll record that you want to make that video.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioner, and members of the community. My name is Latrice Bill, and I have the privilege of serving as a regional advocate coordinator of, for the Regional Community Advocacy Initiative. This program is an initiative under Cornerstone Community Based Programs, led by the incredible leadership team, Dr. McIntyre, our CEO, Dr. Shirley Robertson, our COO, and Tamika Sparul, our program manager. Tonight, I have with me our executive leadership team, our advocates, and some of our citizens team. Will you guys please stand? Thank you all so much for attending with us this evening. Tonight, I'm excited to share the progress we've made since the inception of our program. Region one, which is Washington and McSwamp, has focused on the housing insecurity, one of the most pressing challenges of our area. Ms. Johnny S. Carroll led the efforts to rally community partners, bringing stakeholders to the table to explore actionable solutions. In the city of Washington, we have had some homes refurbished, some new homes have been built, but some of those homes were not affordable to the residents of Beaufort County. Although that was something that we were really looking forward to, this initiative will continue, because there is much need in our area. Region two, which is our Bill Haley and Bath area, turning this attention to the critical issue of road conditions. Under the leadership of Maurice Griffin, residents have come together to have their voices heard with community forums and talk about the poor state of their roads. Maurice facilitated community meetings where the residents not only expressed their concerns, but had the opportunity to participate in hands-on activities such as taking spray paint and marking the roads, because they actually live in the area. So they were able to really show the town manager and the mayor where the issues are. So we appreciate them for all they did there. This initiative will continue in January 2025. Region three, which is Blunt's Creek and Chaco Winity, had a lack of reliable internet service. This was identified as a major barrier when we did our surveys in that area. Ms. Lavikina Grimes spearheaded that area. She addressed the major broadband issues in the community, as well as informed the residents of the work that was being done behind the scenes with Spectrum and Bright Speed. She organized citizens' meetings to provide updates, listen to the residents' concerns, and establish connections with local stakeholders. We appreciate every one of the commissioners that were able to attend and assist with that. There was little to no service in the Blunt's Creek area. In the conversations with representatives of Spectrum and Bright Speed and previous commissioners, the lines have begun to go down in the undeserved areas. Region four focused on the combating food insecurity in the Richland Township area, the area for region four is Aurora and Edwards. It was led by Mr. Willie Cox. This region partnered with key initiatives like the Rite Revival, Weekly Produce Bus, and the Community Gardens, and other nonprofit organizations to bring essential services to the community. Community forums brought together people to discuss food insecurities, providing a space for open dialogue, problem solving. Through ongoing efforts, Mr. Cox was able to rally support from key leaders and community members to advocate for an increase in food with a goal of expanding to have a grocery store in the area. Although the grocery store was not feasible, there was a community cupboard that will be housed in the Old Family Dollar by Goodwill. This initiative will also start breaking ground at the Old Family Dollar building. Looking ahead, I want to invite all of you to show your support by joining us at our community meetings, engaging with the residents, and building lasting relationships with the people we serve. Your presence and partnership can make all the difference as we continue to create positive and sustainable change. Thank you for your continued support for our regional advocates, and together we are making a difference. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have our representative from our district, Keith Kidwell. Welcome, Keith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the time to speak with the commissioners and the people this evening. Want to congratulate Commissioner Dunn on his election. Well done, no pun intended, but it took you a while to get there, but you did it, and we expect good things from you. And on the reelection of the rest of the commissioners, congratulations. Look forward to working with you in the coming years. As you well know, I was also reelected. I look forward to the additional two years that have been added to my sentence, so we'll continue to work with that. As you know, we're coming to a close on this biennium. We'll go up next week to conclude our business for this session, and business will resume then on the next session, probably in late January. And I look forward to a lot of good things as we've continued to do for eastern North Carolina, not just Beaufort County. Commissioner DeTherich and I were speaking earlier in reference to some economic development for this area. As you well know, the airport project is moving forward. We spoke with Senator Tillis and Senator Budd's office last week and laid out the strategy and plan for what's happening at the airport, what has happened, and the future plans. They are both on board with that. They're, both sit on key committees to the success of the future of the airport, so that's going to be a big thing. We're going to see a whole lot of new things going on. We've already seen some business move into the area. We rented out the hangar, as you well know. And if I'm not mistaken, for the first time, period, the airport is in the black. All right? So we're no longer drawing off of the city's funds to keep that in operation. It's actually supporting itself now, which is wonderful. We're going to continue to do that, working on the industrial park in Aurora. They've started the growth on that. Look forward to the college opening up down there to help educate, re-educate the folks for nutrient. Is that my timer, Mr. Chairman?
I just hit it by mistake. You keep, keep going, Keith.
I was thinking you were cutting me short.
Nah, yeah. You keep going.
Anyway, that's pretty much about it. You well know, we did not get to a budget this year. The House sent a very good budget over to the Senate with a lot of good things to happen in eastern North Carolina. Unfortunately, they did not see fit to pass that, and we'll have to go back and just redraw and start over again. January, we'll probably get a new budget later in the year. Just found out as we entered the meeting that I was appointed by the Speaker to the Clean Recovery Special Committee. I look forward to serving in that capacity. I do want to let all of our folks know, cities, counties, that that was a massive, massive blow to North Carolina. Not just to the land, to the people, also to the taxes that we'll see flow in from those areas. The tourism in that area is down sixty to seventy percent. It's not going to recover quickly, not the tourism aspect of it, not the farming. It's going to be a bad situation for a long time. The early estimates that, that's North Carolina's piece of this, are somewhere in the forty billion dollar range. It's going to be unbelievable. We've already allocated about 1.2 billion to that project to get things back going. There's going to be a lot of federal money coming in. I understand Tillis and Budd's office have put in for a hundred billion that should be coming into the area. It's just amazing what it's going to take to bring that back. If you've not paid attention to it, there are literally cities, towns, and people's homes. It's not just that the buildings are gone, the land they sat upon is gone. You literally have to bring the dirt back and rebuild it. And the thing I will ask, as you speak, commissioners, to the people, a lot of this stuff you're hearing on the internet is simply not true. I've heard that over 10,000 people died, not even close. It's less than a hundred at this point, I believe, confirmed deaths. Had some overcounts in there actually early on. There were a lot of bad information on things that were done by officials out there. Very little of that was true. The House of Representatives and the Senate took a stand to go out there, a lot of them personally, put their feet on the ground. I can show you pictures of Representative Pless from Haywood County, who was out with his son in a wetsuit rescuing people as the floods were going on. Representative Balcom went in, acquired a warehouse. We were thinking she's probably going to go on and work for Amazon after that's all over, because she did just a phenomenal job in dealing with that. Every time that there was a situation that rose, Representative Jay Adams went out and took a corner of an airfield out at Hickory. They put together flight operations with helicopters and started flying helicopters as much as ninety flights a day in and out of that airport to run MASH units, to run food in and out, to run rescue operations. When FEMA came down and toured the operation, they looked at it and said, we can't believe you put this together in forty-eight hours. That's how quickly that happened. So there was a lot that was done, a lot of it done by the members of the House and the Senate that actually got out there and took charge. What we're going to do when we go into next session is review how this will be dealt with in the future to make sure that some of the things that did go wrong do not go wrong again. We had a sheriff, a sheriff's officer, it was a SWAT team officer out of Georgia who came up to deliver supplies, had his firearm with him. Mr. Sheriff, I'm not sure, but most of the time when you have a fellow member from another area show up in another state with his firearm on his hip because he's used to carrying it, that's generally, you know, qualified reason for him to be carrying it. He got arrested by one of the city police, and I called the Speaker. Somebody contacted me about it. I called the Speaker of the House, and we had him taken out of the jail as quickly as possible and put back to his task. So some of these things shouldn't happen, and we have to make sure that it does not again, because for the grace of God, this could happen in eastern North Carolina as well. We're not alien to hurricanes and tornadoes and floods and things of that nature. I remember Dennis and Floyd and Bertha and Fran and Bonnie, and I could go on, and what they've done to our areas. So we have to become better as a state in dealing with this to make sure that we can do the best we can as we serve the people, both at the county and the state level. With that, I think that's about it. I do have, I want to invite all of you to a Christmas party at my home Saturday evening that my wife is struggling to put together. I'm surprised she even puts up with me sometimes. We'll start about six o'clock. Everybody, staff, and commissioners, you're invited to come and attend, and I will stand for any questions you might have.
Any, any questions?
I'm sorry, I can't come. I'll be out of town, but thank you for the invitation. The person that was arrested, was it, who was he arrested by?
I'll leave that out, Commissioner.
Okay.
Suffice to say, it was the city police, and they kind of overstepped what they should have been doing.
Okay. Thank you.
We had a few instances like that, Commissioner. We had, technically in Tennessee, we had a sheriff in Tennessee confiscate product out of a aircraft that was flown in. Matter of fact, there was a paratrooper, not paratrooper, skydiving school from eastern North Carolina that flew out to Tennessee with supplies. And the sheriff out there confiscated what they had on their aircraft and told them if they came back, they'd be arrested. They contacted me, because I put my number out on the internet and told anybody if they had these situations, contact me, and I would try and run whatever interference I could. And I got literally hundreds of phone calls. This particular situation with the aircraft, we got him clearance into two different airfields, and the last time I heard from him was just a few days after. They were thrilled, they were running three aircraft three times a day into those airports, delivering 2,000 pounds at a time of supplies. So that was very helpful. Now, I can't help what happened in Tennessee, but we need to make room to make sure these things don't happen in North Carolina.
Well, thank you, Representative, for doing that. It's really important that you take that active stand, because if you don't, sometimes politicians have forgotten that their power is usurped by others.
That's true, and unfortunately, some of the people that are in elected office will usurp power that they don't actually have, or when they're in appointed office. The bureaucrats seem to do that, and we're dealing with that as well.
That I am very thankful for.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Commissioners, thank you all very much. I hope you have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Okay, gentlemen, we're down to items for consent. Is there any item that you would like to pull?
I'd like to hear some more discussion on the investment policy, just information.
What number is that?
Uh, number six.
Number six, okay. All right. Anyone else entertain a motion to approve the remaining eleven?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second. All those in favor approving the eleven items for consent, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, raise your right hand. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can we address that one? Can we go ahead and address that one?
Yeah, you sure can. That's on page thirty.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So have bank officials meet with me several weeks ago from First National Bank. That's where we have our main operating account at, and they informed me that we could be earning some additional interest on our idle funds that sit in our operating account by having them swept at night and also put in an overnight certificate of deposit, which you'll see is allowed by the local government commission. You'll see that on page thirty-one. That's an allowable investment for us to participate in. So just need to update our policy to include that in our policy so that I can do that with our bank.
So let me be sure I understand this. So what we're talking about doing is an overnight investment move where we deposit money?
Yes, they deposit the money on our behalf, and it's an overnight sweep of our operating funds, whatever available amount we have to invest.
So it gives us more income than what we had before?
Interest income, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. I read that stuff, and my head began to spin when they were talking about deposit this, and somebody has to counter deposit and something else. This is safe money. We're not going to get locked up in this because of some financial crisis. Okay? You good?
Yeah.
All right. You want to make a motion to approve the update?
Oh, no, I don't, well, yeah, I understand it now. I move that we approve it.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a second. All those in favor of updating our investment policy as noted, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay, we're down for items for decisions. There are soil and water, support the grant award, and approve the budget ordinance. Nathaniel?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
The Beaufort Soil and Water Conservation District applied for additional grant funds through the NC Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services Division of Soil and Water Conservation to continue with stream flow rehabilitation assistance program strap projects within Beaufort County. Contract number twenty-
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
We, we'll let these people leave before we- You're good. Sorry.
Contract number twenty-five dash zero zero eight dash four zero nine zero in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars was awarded to the district. No county match of the funds awarded is required. The Beaufort Soil and Water Conservation District's Board of Supervisors recommends that the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners support their approval of the grant award and that they approve a project budget ordinance in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars to continue with the strap projects.
Okay. You got a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion or questions of Nathaniel? All right. Hearing none, we take a vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, we're down to the items for decision. Sheriff's Office. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I'm here to present a contract renewal. We'll do, do it in order, for the utility associates' multi-year contract. This is going to be for our body cameras and N-Car video systems.
Excuse me. Would you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Lynnwood McLaughlin. I'm with the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office.
Okay.
Sorry about that. This would be a price, the contract would state, a price of seventy-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty cents, paid out once a year from December of 2024 to December of 2029.
Any, any questions on this contract? You had, you had a separate handout laying on the desk because the dates were wrong, and the handout's got it corrected. The total dollar match the same, and the payment matches the same. It just had that we had all of the payments on 24 in the year 2024. Okay, I entertain a motion to, to approve the renewal of the contract as relates to the, to the cameras.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, you got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right, got a second by Commissioner Dunn. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. You want to go to the, the next one?
Yes, sir. The second one is going to be for our Toshiba Business Solutions State Contract Agreement. This is a new contract, but almost essentially a renewal. There's actually a twenty-one dollar difference. It's actually going to be twenty-one dollars cheaper a month for a three-year term, beginning November of 2024 to November of 2027. And this is the same contract that we've been on. This will cover six Toshiba copiers, one that includes fax, and a separate Toshiba conference, correction, copier, sorry. So seven in total. And that will be seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars a month for thirty-six months.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve, do I have a second? All right, got a second by Commissioner Dunn. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. You want to go to the, the next one?
Yes, sir. The second one is going to be for our Toshiba Business Solutions State Contract Agreement. This is a new contract, but almost essentially a renewal. There's actually a twenty-one dollar difference. It's actually going to be twenty-one dollars cheaper a month for a three-year term, beginning November of 2024 to November of 2027. And this is the same contract that we've been on. This will cover six Toshiba copiers, one that includes fax, and a separate Toshiba conference, correction, copier, sorry. So seven in total. And that will be seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars a month for thirty-six months.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, got a second by Commissioner Dunn. Anybody got a question?
Well, where are these copiers located?
We're going to have, we have one in our front office, one in communications, one in the CID investigations, one in the narcotics building. Trying to think of my head.
Detention.
Detention is, there's two in detention.
Okay. Okay. Everybody good? All right, everybody in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
All right, the jail plan meal contract. Sheriff Hammond's?
Good evening, Chairman. Want to say congratulations to all those sworn in again tonight. Repeating that, Commissioner Dunn? Congratulations.
Thank you.
I am Sheriff Hammond, tonight, bringing back Trinity Services Group. They, these three gentlemen drove down from out of state to come and make a presentation to you and answer those questions. And our primary speaker tonight is going to be Mr. Steve, you step out up here, Mr. Steve Slay. Mr. Tom Phillips is his district manager, and Scott Hefner will be our point of contact and our day-to-day operational manager, so what we'll do. At this point, I want to tell them thank you for coming to clear any kind of questions you may have. All right? Appreciate it, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Steve Slay. I'm the regional vice president of sales of Trinity Services Group. And as the sheriff said, we've got Tom Phillips, the district manager, and Scott Hefner. Those are the operators, the guys that get all work done in the days during, in the trenches. We provided a proposal for meal services. Trinity Services Group specializes in corrections feeding. We have about twenty accounts in North Carolina at this time. We also serve other locations from jails that we have the food service at. Also, at Caldwell County, North Carolina, we service three other jails from that jail kitchen, so a total of four jails. So, it's kind of a, we have a few other things going on in various across the United States. We have about 400 jails that we work in across the country. So, when we look at a project like this, we really want to help, and it's a help all around. It's got to be good on the money, the budget. It's got to be good quality for the population of the facility, and it's got to be good for the community. So, we look at every project. We do an analysis. This one, these require a little bit more in-depth analysis. I had to go to the sheriff at Craven County and get permission to use that kitchen to provide meals for his fellow sheriff, Sheriff Hammond over here. All of that has been done. We got approvals, so we were able to move forward with a proposal. We feel like it's responsive and competitive, and I think Katie several hard copies, so I'm here to entertain any questions. And if I can't answer them, I'll get my, the heavy hitters up here. Anything?
Yes, Commissioner Dunn.
So, this is a three-year contract, correct?
Well, it's actually, we propose a one-year contract that's renewable each year.
Okay. I looked at the menu. I like to eat. I noticed that it's kind of heavy into turkey. I also noticed that for breakfast, every meal for breakfast has cornflakes. You never serve Cocoa Krispies or Sugar Smacks. It's cornflakes, every single solitary meal. For lunch, every single solitary meal, 365 days, is a Mandarin orange. It doesn't say fresh fruit. It says a Mandarin orange. I mean, is that something that's going to be every day? 365 days a year, a Mandarin orange for lunch? That's on the meal, your four-week meal plan that you got?
Yeah, the state of North Carolina has various meal and nutritional requirements.
I mean, if you had said fresh fruit, I could understand a fresh fruit, but you got Mandarin orange every day?
Yeah, we can entertain changes to the menu at any time.
Well, I just, you know, hopefully, I won't ever have to stay down there, but I don't want to look at Mandarin orange, and I don't know if you're doing Mandarin oranges to dilate with scurvy or something like that. But, you know, it's just, I just looked at the menu. I noticed that you made arrangements to dilate with the issues about whether my pork chop's bigger than your pork chop, or whether your piece of chicken's bigger than my piece of chicken, because they ain't going to have pork chops, and they ain't going to have fried chicken. They're having patties that are portioned in advance. So, you'll bring a hot lunch, and you bring a hot supper, and then you'll leave breakfast, which will be a cold breakfast for the next day. Are these being brought in a Melmac-type tray or something like that, or are they being brought in styrofoam trays?
The meals will be served on styrofoam. Lunch and dinner will be served right in the jail, in a little serving area that's there now. So, it'll actually be traded up, hot or cold, and sent right upstairs. The breakfast is left in a refrigeration, which we're going to be providing overnight so that it can be distributed in the morning.
Peanut butter. No crackers with it? I mean, is it a container of Jif peanut butter? Or is it a two-ounce plastic tub that they're putting a spoonful of peanut butter in?
Is it bulk?
Yeah, we bought peanut butter in bulk in talks.
Okay. You know, I, believe it or not, I actually used to work in the jail. So, you know, I kind of know how some of the food stuff is. I mean, if you're doing the Melmac dishes and things, then you have to account for that piece of equipment once it goes into sale, getting it back out of sale. I'm concerned about that and everything else. Okay.
There's quite a lot of evolution in jail meals over the last 20, well, Tom's 42 years in this business, and I'm about 40. So, we've seen a lot of change since we started. Dieticians have taken over a little bit of the lead responsibility in designing a menu that first meets the standards, and then we have to figure out ways to, you know, solve the other dilemmas with the budget. But, the cold breakfast option has been adopted in many facilities across the country, mainly in regards to staffing, because that way, you know, it's gotten a lot harder to hire people in correctional facilities all around, for any job in there. And it reduces cost. The days can be shrunk down a little bit. There was challenges, new challenges with inmate labor. Some of these things you may not know about because your facility doesn't have an actual working kitchen. So, it's the places like Craven where, you know, they have an inmate workforce of, say, 12 inmates in the kitchen working with our staff. So, it has evolved into where it is today. I can only tell you that we've got, certainly, all the counts we've got across the state and many other states, we have maintained for a long time through rebid processes or just through the natural course of them continuing to exercise the extension of the contract because we're doing a good job.
Other questions?
Yeah. The, right now, we're getting meals provided for $3.15 a meal, three meals a day. We had 55 inmates in the jail in this last report this month. We've been having less than 60 for about the last six or eight months. If you use your sliding scale for population range, and if 51 to 60 meals is $5.70, if we, and of course, we work actively to reduce our jail population. So, if you use that, then we would be paying $5.72 for a meal that we are getting now for $3.15. That's a $2.50 or an 81 and 1/2% increase in cost. What are we going to get for that additional $166,000 a year?
Excuse me? The man's office.
I just wanted to add to that. So, we received information from our current vendor. I know that Commissioner Richardson quoted $3.15 per meal, and that is accurate. However, she did say to us that she was going to go up $1 per meal, so the new updated price would be $4.15 per meal.
Was that her bid?
No, that was not her bid. That was due to the requirement of keeping the food temperature at the proper rate. She had to upgrade the type of packaging that she was doing, and she was going to charge a dollar per meal for that. So, she mentioned that her price would be going up to $4.15 per meal.
Well, what are we going to get for this additional money?
Well, for the way our program is designed, with, we are investing in this program as well. We have to purchase a delivery vehicle, which costs $65,000. That's a customized van that, you know, we use at our other locations as well to transport the bulk foods to the facility, back and forth. We have to hire people. We have to hire the drivers and those people that are going to end up serving the meals. So, there's more oversight invested in our program. You'll have serve-safe, certified people that will be traying up these trays within the jail, and then it goes right upstairs. They're there to handle any issues that come up, because you won't have to worry about making a phone call and having something run back. We'll be there to take care of it. Special diets, we have special diet needs with us as well.
Have you been inside of our jail?
Yes.
One of the reasons that we have these meals prepared, pre-prepared and packaged now is because there's not any room in the jail to do that.
Right.
I mean, where are you going to do this? Where are you going to set up a kitchen or a facility in the jail in order to prepare these meals so they can be served?
There's a small area downstairs.
A very, very, very small area. Anyone else?
To the staff, really. Has the staff reviewed these procedures, and are they happy with it? And is this easier than what it was before?
Yes. And there is room there for preparing the meals, and what he's speaking of is their employee is there to monitor, and that's a benefit to us. Helping us with the arrangements of the meals is a benefit to us.
So, for years now, we have followed the philosophy of doing everything we can to keep that jail safe for the staff and for the people in it. And so, we've spent a lot of money on doors and locks and cameras and security, and I think this is just as important as that. So, I'm all for this. Thank you.
I want to go to after.
I understand that you're going to prepare the meals in Craven County, Sheriff Hughes Jail. What is your backup plan? I understand that you only have one-year contract with a year-to-year renewal. What is your backup plan if Sheriff Hughes or Craven County Commissioners say we no longer want this service here? What's the backup plan for Beaufort County?
Well, this is the kind of thing that comes up. You know, you have all kinds of emergency plans that we usually would initiate a firm plan after we are awarded a contract, because there's no sense getting too much into detail. But, we have neighboring areas that we also do, like Pamlico County, Bayboro. We do the food service there. We have staff. We do Wake County, Raleigh. We have a lot of staff over there, so, and resources all over the state. So, when something comes up, we, and we've done it for years, we just communicate, rally together, and put together a solution.
I understand. I mean, but my question is, yes, Raleigh have a nice kitchen, but Raleigh is also two and a half hours from here, from their kitchen here. So, the question, the only question I have, not your service. I just want to know your backup plan in case, I mean, that, I mean, we not the only one in North Carolina that got a hood Richardson. Now, there's some more Commissioners got a hood Richardson, too. They might come in and say, when they say, we don't, we don't want this. So, that's what I'm looking at, the backup plan if something happened that one of the Commissioners or Sheriff Hughes say, we no longer want this service. I don't care how you get it here. I mean, as long, I mean, as long as you got, as long as our sheriff is going to be accommodated in a timely manner.
Commissioner, Pamlico County was in the conversation. They have a kitchen facility outside, so as it continues.
Well, I understand that. Now, that raises, that raises another question for me. Pamlico is closer to us. Why you didn't get Pamlico? I mean, is it a business decision, or was it just better facilities in Craven?
Craven's facility is much larger.
Thank you.
I just want to point out that right now, these packages are delivered outside the jail. Jail personnel come out, pick them up, and take them inside. What we're proposing to do now is to put more people in the jail from the outside of the jail, coming and going and working in the jail. I believe it was mentioned that this would give us better security. This will not give us better security in the jail. This is going to give us a lot worse security in the jail because contraband is a problem in our jail.
Commissioner, that's my, that's my job to handle that, and I, that's one individual who's vetted to take care of that. That's part of the vetting of his personnel for me to take care of backgrounds.
But, Sheriff, jails have been closed in North Carolina. Prisons with much better security than we'd ever think about having have been closed because they could not keep the contraband, namely narcotics, out of the jail. What makes you think you can do a better job?
We'll do the best job we're able to do.
Well, I want to, I want to ask one more question. Why, we had a vendor who was providing us $3.15 meal, and we were happy with them. So, now, because we've gone out and rattled the cages and brought up issues, the minimum that's, that we're going to get away with is a 20, what is it, $3, 25, 30, actually, a 33% increase in cost of jail food. So, why did we go and want to change vendors to begin with?
Because the inflation, the rate you're quoting, inflation rate has outpriced at $3. That's, I've been here two years, and that rate was quoted the year before I even arrived here. So, you're not quoting a today's inflation rate of what food costs in the preparation for it.
But, I am quoting what we're paying for today's rate. Until we started rattling the cage, the price was $3.15, and we went out and we rattled the cage. We've upset things, and now we're costing ourselves money, and we're going to be costing ourselves even more money. So, why did we decide to change this? What was the big impetus? What was killing us?
I found it to be an unsafe product to continue coming through the jail.
Okay, gentlemen. The state didn't find that.
Is there any question as it relates to the contract that's on the agenda? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the one-year contract.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion? Is there a second? I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of this contract with Trinity Service, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, gentlemen, we're down to 6:55, so I'm going to go ahead and, we'll take a break, and then when we come back, Christina, you'll be up.
Chief.
Okay, we'll start back, and we've got next on the agenda, the approval of the construction contract on the administrative building roof. Christina?
Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, sir. On page 188 of your agenda packet, you see the abstract regarding the replacement of the roof for the administration building. REI Engineers provided professional roof services to inspect, design, and bid the replacement of the administration building roof. REI issued a bid package on October 15th, conducted a pre-bid meeting on October 22nd, and received bids on November 6th. REI has reviewed the bids and recommends awarding a construction contract in the amount of $108,904 be awarded to McClure Metal Specialties out of Williamson to replace the approximately 3,550 square foot roof. You'll see attached in your agenda packet the letter of recommendation from REI Engineers, as well as the bid tabulation that shows the contractors that provided bids and their dollar amounts. McClure Specialties, if you recall, they also provided the roof replacement at the Tidlin Building. So, we are familiar with the contractor, and they provided a good service to us. No additional funds are required. The project actually came in less than what was budgeted, so at this time, no additional funds are required. You have any questions?
Any?
It wasn't me. It was McClure Specialties.
Any Commissioner have a question for Christina as it relates to the contract? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the construction contract.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Okay, the next items is emergency services. So, Chris?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I have a couple of things before you tonight. If I'm not mistaken by the agenda, our first is an animal control initiative, spay and neuter initiative. Is that right? Jasper's Christmas wish?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, this is actually a donation that we recently received from a citizen who wishes to remain anonymous. This has been a longtime provider of donation funds for us in the past, but this has been her largest of $20,000. And what she specifically asked for on that was to use those monies to spay and neuter as many dogs in Beaufort County as that money would allow us to do. So, given that challenge, Chief Sawyer met with Pamlico Vet and Chalkwindy Vet to try to figure out how we could facilitate that, and came up with an idea that would allow citizens to register using a link on our website. That information would be shared with the vets, and once the vet has that information, those services are done by that vet, scheduled by the vet. We're not involved in the scheduling piece, and once the procedure's completed, it's billed back to us. And once the procedure is completed, it's billed back to us. So what we are asking for from the Commissioners tonight is simply the budget ordinances that would allow us to do that as a donation that comes into general fund, taking that $20,000 and putting it into a line item titled Jasper's Christmas Wish, and allow us to expend those funds to spay and neuter animals, which by our calculations, on the agreed-upon prices, is going to be about 66 dogs that we'll be able to accomplish. So with that, I have Chief Sawyer here, who'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Now we're open if somebody has a question.
I just wanted to ask.
Yes.
I understand what you're doing, but is this, the person just, how do you pick the people that want to bring the dog?
So we did this particular one on a first-come, first-served. We have other programs that allow us to identify people who may be in financial assistance or needs for that. Assessing that can be problematic, and we just chose to do this as a first-come, first-served for Beaufort County citizens.
Another question, did you consider, I don't know what spay and neuter costs, to get as many more dogs as you could for the owner to put up 50%? Or was it just, this is the quickest way to get it done?
We did 100%, and we took that, correct me if I'm wrong, just from the conversation of the donor who wished all of that to be.
That's all that matters? Thank you.
And we named, I included a handout in your agenda. We actually named this initiative after this donor's dog, Jasper. That attachment gives a quick story of Jasper, and it's very much a success story of our shelter. So good piece there.
Anyone else?
Chris?
Yes.
I know there's another program in Beaufort County that for $35, you get a voucher to go take a cat, to have it spayed or neutered also. I mean, would this, would they consider doing that also? Because that would extend Jasper Wish out further, you know, if somebody would, you know, do the $35 voucher?
So if, and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong.
The vouchers through the Humane Society.
That's right.
So the Humane Society offers that just for cats. Yeah, the $35 voucher is through the Humane Society, and it's just for cats only. And a lot of it is through the feral, for feral cats. There's a lot of that.
So that's one of those programs, similar to what Commissioner Booth was mentioning, that allows us to target kind of different audiences or different needs based on those programs.
But the donors specify dogs.
That's correct. That's correct.
There's not as many programs for dogs. You know, we do have the money that you gave us for case animal, for our dogs. If we come out and saw, see a need, we can offer that. And this is just kind of an extra boost because, I mean, we're, the dogs are, we're really seeing an overpopulation right now. And it's getting worse all the time.
And we would like to thank Pamlico and Chalkwindy that the price that they're giving us for these procedures is discounted to help us stretch these funds to go further.
So Chief Sawyer, how many dogs have you taken home from the pound?
One.
One. How about you, Chris?
I've got, I've got three.
Three.
From this pound and my fourth I picked up on.
Christmas is coming, Christmas is coming up. Don't buy a puppy for your child and then next month, carry it back. And don't carry an old dog to the pound and pick up a new dog. Keep the one you got.
That's right.
Melanie, can you mention the SNIP program just so we can get that out to the public? I'm not sure a lot of people are familiar with that program either.
Oh, boy. You put me on the spot. So we do have a SNIP program. It is, if you are getting any government assistance, you get an application, it's turned in. Once it's approved, you do get a discounted rate to have your animals spayed or neutered. So that is also an option. There are a lot of options if people just ask, you know, we can offer a lot of stuff.
Program offered through the state.
Yeah, it's offered through the state. Yes.
Okay, got a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of the Jasper Christmas Wish initiative, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Chief.
All right. The next item is a grant-funded handheld Viper radio purchase.
That's correct. And I believe Brandon's going to be, there we go, pulling up a PowerPoint for you to view, and this should also be included in your agenda. So starting with some quick history, as you know, for the last four years or so, our office has been looking for funding opportunities to help improve communications with our first responders in our county, specifically fire departments, who now are using a VHF system. And just the trend of industry and communications is going digital in the Viper network. And unfortunately, the pros and cons to that are, it's a very good radio system as far as the ability to talk uninterrupted and consistency of communication. The con to it is, there's expensive radios, right? So we've been trying to find funding to help kind of absorb some of that financial impact to our departments, and we had some success with an initiative that we worked with Tillis' office in back in April. So if you recall, backing up a few months, we came to the board with the acceptance of $893,000 of congressional direct funding for the purpose of buying handheld radios, specifically 140 handheld radios, all with a lapel mic and all with a charger. Now, next slide, please, Brandon. Now, when we look at Viper radios, just like car manufacturers, there are different manufacturers of radios. Some have different reputations than others. What we have traditionally used in Beaufort County is Motorola. A lot of people ask, why do you use Motorola? Well, first, the Viper system that North Carolina uses is built and maintained by Motorola. So when you, there is no question of interoperability of one radio, one make of radio versus another. The other thing that we have is because Motorola is kind of that industry standard, it's what most of our departments have. So chargers, batteries, being familiar with using the radio, navigating the radio, changing channels, there's just a familiarity there. The biggest piece that we have for Motorola is we have the ability in-house to program these radios. So when you, when you look at these radios, I, as a kid, had a CB in my truck, right? These are not CB radios. These are, these are computers, and everything's digitally programmed. And we have the ability in-house, both through the equipment and the expertise of people, to program these radios and program channels in these radios. Why is that important? The Viper network has hundreds of channels, and every few years, they update those channels. As they add more or they reassign them to different purposes. Now we're getting into the encryption piece. But to kind of sum that up, if we had to come and program this radio or rely on a vendor to do that, that ranges between $60 and $100 per radio every time this radio has to be updated. The last update that the state went through was about a year ago, and Ryan in DC programmed these radios for the majority of our fire departments at no cost. So Motorola gives us that ability to do that. The other thing that we run into with Motorola, just like we use them very frequently, a lot of our state and federal partners use these as well. So give you a real case and point of interoperability. As you know, we sent some responders to the western part of the state for hurricane, for the last hurricane over the summer. When that group went, they were paired with a group out of Morehead. Morehead uses Kenwood radios. We use Motorola. So does the majority of our state partners. When Morehead got to the mountains and tried to operate, they realized that their channels were not programmed correctly, and we did not have the ability to fix that in the field because no one there was familiar with Kenwood or had the ability to program. Back it up in time to Hurricane Florence, when we had the team from Arizona come to us. They came with Motorola radios, and as soon as they checked in, they were programmed to our channels, and there was no problem with communication. So we look at Motorola and based on this criteria and talking with purchasing at finance, our needs and our use of it certainly rises to the level of sole sourcing versus the competitive bid that we would normally do. Now, all of these contracts, or all of these vendors, companies, I'm sorry, are on state contract. And essentially, what they list is a percentage off list price for state contract. So for example, Kenwood has a 10% to 15% off by state contract of their list price. Motorola has on state contract a discount of 10% to 28% off list price. The pricing that we're going to share with you for Motorola is actually about 29% off. So when we're looking at a price comparison, right, we get ripped off by Motorola for purchasing $893,000. In our opinion, we're not, it actually exceeds what they list on the state contract in the prices that we're seeing. So a little bit of background on the different vendors of these and why we look specifically at Motorola and that, in that value of the purchase. Next slide, please, Brandon? Thank you. So the next challenge we're faced with is, well, of those 140 radios, how do we determine how many each department gets? In talking with our EMS captains, our plan was to provide two of these handheld radios to each frontline 911 EMS truck to include their spares. The reason why we're adding two handheld radios to the spare units is there are times in which we have to up-staff ambulances, and we want that unit to have the ability of a handheld radio on it. So EMS, in talking with the EMS captains, two of these handhelds, which is what EMS uses. So there's a couple of differences in this, and I'll pass it around. I'll turn it on, so if you tee up, I'm talking to the camera. So this, this particular radio is a Viper radio only, so it's only talking on that digital network. And it has just your general use spec. So it's not water-resistant, it's not fire-rated, it's not intrinsically safe. It's your lowest tier. Breaker, breaker.
My old call lines at 114, Beaufort County.
Yeah, there you go. So EMS, because of the nature of business, has a different spec to the radios. This is a radio that we would be pricing for EMS. On the fire side, because it's a fire-rated radio, and I want to leave this in the strap because this is typically how the guys carry it, fire service has different demands and specs. One of the biggest difference in these radios is that radio is waterproof, it's rated to much higher temperature, so that's actually rated for internal temperatures of a structure fire. It's intrinsically safe for your hazmat calls. It has bigger knobs so that someone with a glove hand can navigate it. And that particular radio, depending on how you get these, can either talk only on Viper or only on VHF, or both Viper and VHF, so single band or dual band. When we look at us for emergency services, because we'll be getting eight of these radios as well, one of the things we have to look at is encryption for secure channels. So if you remember, over the last two years, law enforcement has made a very big effort to get secure channels so that when they're dealing with public safety and sensitive-type communications, it can't be listened to by someone with a scanner app. Okay? Well, that, thank you, sir. Did you hear what you were saying over there? Yeah, I appreciate it. That, that trend is now leaving EMS and going into emergency management. So we know that the radios that at least our emergency management office staff is going to be using in the next three years is going to require encryption for us to be compliant. And when you start adding those encryption features to a radio, it's much more expensive. Okay? So those are the needs that we see when we're trying to figure out of these 140 total radios, who gets how many and of what type radio? Okay? Thank you, Brandon. So now we're looking at the prices. So this radio that EMS will be getting with a mic and a charger is about $5,400 each based on Motorola's quote. The list price on this is $7,607. They've quoted us at $5,490. The radio that fire departments will be using, if they use just Viper only, list for $8,500, Motorola's given us a quoted price of $6,160. And if they choose to get a dual-band radio, able to talk Viper and VHF, the list price on this radio is $11,700, and they've quoted a surprise of $84. Now, one of the questions that some people may have who are watching this is, well, why does fire need a dual-band radio? Why do they need the ability to talk on VHF and Viper? Well, that's because we're in this weird moment of the time where we're talking on two different systems. Remember, our fire system, well, yeah, for Clark's neck, for your home, Department 3, right? For Beaufort County Fire Departments, we are dispatching on a VHF system, which was the simulcast system that this board approved several years ago for some upgrades. And, and we also have the ability to talk to Viper. So some of the departments have raised the question of, well, what can we do to get a dual-band so that we can talk on either channel until we're able to make the full transition to Viper down the road? So that's why you see the price difference between a dual-band and a single-band radio. Then for us in the EM setting, again, the cost of those encryption, those encrypted radios. So Motorola, right now, their newest radio looks more like a cell phone than it does a radio. So imagine this screen with that antenna on top. That's essentially what their new radios look like. They're not waterproof, they're not fire-rated, but they're able to give us, because this is a promotional sale from Motorola, they can give us their newest radio with the encryption cheaper than they can give us this dual-band with encryption. So that's why you see the different radio for us. That radio listed at $14,000 has a price of $10,000 by our quote. Also included in this quote is $32,000 for training, where a Motorola vendor will provide training on all of this to include us on updating some programming pieces, and then the additional discount of $48. So based on these allocations, 24 for our EMS agencies, 96 of the Viper only for fire. Each department would get a dual-band. So in the fire allocations, right now, based on these numbers, each department would get eight of these radios that can only talk on Viper and one of the dual-bands. That's how we could make the money work as close to the $893 as possible. And then eight of the encrypted radios for us. That would be a total of $893, $872. The $872 difference for us would be paid out of our equipment budget because it's our encrypted radios that are eating that cost. Okay? So next slide, please. This is where the question came into our fire departments. Our fire departments have asked, hey, based on the grant, I'm going to get eight Viper onlys and one dual-band. What can we do to get more dual-bands? So the question came to us of, can a department pay the difference to upgrade this Viper only to a dual-band radio, which equates to $2,266? In talking with Anita in finance, we do think that's certainly a possibility, and we gave the option to the departments. You can do that one of two ways. This is the price it would cost to upgrade each radio. You can pick however many radios you want to upgrade. You don't have to do any if you don't want to. If you want to do three, if you want to do all eight, it's up to the department. But they're responsible for paying that difference. They can either do that in a lump sum payment to us at the time we make the order, or we can work through a payment plan over the remaining of this fiscal year where we deduct that amount from the department's tax allocation each month. And I know based on communications we've already had from fire departments, several of those fire departments are interested in making that upgrade, your department being one of them, of interested in, hey, we would love to put a little bit more money to this and have a radio that can serve both purposes, give us more resiliency and interoperability until we, as a service, are able to go to Viper, to Viper only.
And that $22,000, that $2,000, for how many, if everybody wanted them, how many?
That's each radio.
How many radio, you say?
Eight radios. So, so to give you, see if this answers your question. Right now, each department, based on our grant funds, would get eight of these and one of these. How much would it take to make all eight of these this, that are getting nine dual-bands? About $18,000 per department. About $18,000 per department.
Yes.
What I was getting at, is that important to those guys out there? I mean, if you do it, do it all, and let us find a way to get the money to do that eight, to do all of them that way. I'm sure, after that nice budget that we got today, we could find the money to do all of them that way, only $18,000. I think you said $18,000?
$18,000 per department.
How many departments you got?
14 fire departments.
Oh, no, I back up.
Departments got a lot of their own money if they want it. You don't, you don't have to go out and start raising money for this. They've already got their own money.
And, and again, there are quite a few departments who want to take advantage of this. So, so where does this leave us moving forward? Well, the, the thing that we're kind of in a pickle on is a calendar date of a quote expiration. So these prices from Motorola, our quote is set through December 20th. Now, talking with our vendors from Motorola, they do expect a price increase after January, but when that comes, they don't know. So, for example, let's say we kick this to the next commissioner's meeting in January, January 2nd. Will their price changes take effective January 1? We don't know. But they do expect prices to go up in January. The other thing that we're up against is if we're able to make an order by December 20th, they guarantee us an eight-week delivery time on all these radios. If we go past the first of the year, we're into a 16- to 20-week time delivery. Why is that important? We're just now seeing a supply chain catch-up from COVID when it comes to radios. For example, we've had handhelds ordered for animal control for nine months, nine months, and they still haven't arrived, right? So the, the ability to get these radios in, in eight weeks is a big deal for us. That means we have them programmed and in, in the departments prior to tornado season in April and prior to hurricane season.
Mr. Richards, do I understand this correctly? To do what you're talking about, doing and make this decision, make this work by the 20th, we're not talking about additional funds. It's just a matter of the commissioners approving what you want to do so you can go forward with it.
Right, and, and here's the way.
So I don't see a problem.
And here's, right, that's, that's exactly, that's exactly what we're looking for.
I move that we proceed to make this work by the 20th.
Mike, that we proceed to make this work by the 20th with the fire departments or anybody that wants to upgrade, paying their part of the upgrade.
Okay.
All right, you got a motion, second. No further discussion, or do we? One quick question.
Sure.
Communications have Viper already?
Yes.
So that we won't have to worry about updating it or?
That's, that's right. So in Beaufort County, the fire departments are the only entity not operating on Viper. EMS and law enforcement have been, been on Viper for a while. City of Washington just made the transition at the beginning of this budget year. So our county fire departments are the only entities not operating on Viper at the moment.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the contract, raise your right hand? Are you, okay, just checking. Mr. Chairman? Yes. But may I, I want to ask a question. It may have already been answered, it may be a useless question, and that is, I've sat here for years and years, we've talked about radios and Viper radios and compatibility and all kinds, I ought to know a lot more about radios than I actually know. But is there an, do we have an inventory of Viper radios in Beaufort County and an inventory based on level and an inventory of the needs for radios?
We, we do. Our office kind of undertook that initiative a year ago, just, just over a year ago. So, and we're pretty current because some departments have bought radios since. But to answer your question, yes, we have an idea of how many fire departments have how many Viper radios, the age of those radios, and, and how they're currently being used by department.
Would it be possible with the budget coming up to make that a part of our budget this year, with you giving us, you guys giving us a report of what actual needs are so we can see about what the costs are?
Sure can.
Because we, we, one of the things I'm thinking about is, with this, we've bought enough Viper radios that everybody in the county ought to have one.
So the, the outstanding gap on that and getting fire completely to Viper, this will accomplish the bulk of the handhelds. What we have not tackled is the radios in the trucks themselves, the mobile radios. And we're actually working with, you know, Congressman Murphy's office on some, a similar project of potentially some direct allocations for that, but we won't know that until the state or the feds go through their next budget process.
It's in the federal budget just long as it stays in the federal budget.
And I think that was 500, 400,000, something like that. So, yeah. But we'll include that in our budget conversations.
Okay. We're down to the next item, the mitigation support contract services with the Mideast Commission.
Sure. So as, as you know, this is a conversation that we've had over a couple of months now. Since our October 7th meeting, we've been in conversations with Mideast to try to finalize contracts for two mitigation efforts. One is for the continuation of our current Florence projects. So if you, if you recall, we had a three-year, a three-year contract with Mideast to manage those that expired in July of this year. This would be a continuation of that until those projects are completed. We're about halfway through of those elevation projects. The second is the FMA 2020, which is what the young lady spoke about earlier. This is for the homes, separate grant piece. This is for the eight homes that we've been talking about for, for a couple of months now. We've included a timeline of our conversations, and what we've also included with your packet tonight is the version of the contracts that we would like to see executed. This is, this is a version that Mideast has sent to us, and what we recommended was two additional changes. And in order to, to keep this from having to be delayed to another meeting, we made those changes to this contract. So on your FMA contract, what that change included was in your fee schedule on the FMA 2020 contract, there was a clause at the bottom that said lodging, travel, and printing per diems would be billed separately at cost to the county. As a local contract, there shouldn't be any lodging and travel per diems associated with this, and printing should be minimal. So what we asked, just like we did with NSYCT, will you remove that and include all costs not to exceed $21,200? So that was the change we made to the FMA 2020. The continuation of the Florence contract was almost, well, in their original submission, was identical to our previous contract. They just simply changed the dates to extend out three more years. And if you recall in our previous conversations, one of the things that we did not like about that previous contract was there was a termination clause that said if the workload gets too much, Mideast can back out. And in conversations that we've had with Mideast, as well as some of you, Mideast has given us the assurance that workload is not an issue, so we asked to have that removed. Mr. Bryant Buck agreed to that in an email, but never sent us the corrected, the corrected contract back, so we made those changes. And that's what we have included tonight. Giving your approval, we'll send this back to Mideast for executing signatures, and we'll move on with these processes. We do have some additional questions about this in general, but they're all billing-related, and we can tackle those when it comes times to process invoices. We don't want to hold the contracts.
Motion to approve. Got a motion to approve both of these contracts. Do I have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Any questions, Chris? All right, all those in favor of approving the two different contracts with Mideast as it relates to the grant program, please raise your right hand.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, Brian, we're down to, the first item for you is the Session Law 2426 Resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Board. Page one, page 223, as you'll recall, or you may not recall, there's Session Law 202426, which is effective October 1, 2024. They created General Statute 143805. I hate that I even have to say this, but it, it prohibits the, the viewing of pornography on judicial, legislative, local government, and state computer networks. You would think you wouldn't have to say that. Evidently, there was something that occurred, and the General Assembly passed a law that says that you can't do that, except for exceptions. They do list exceptions for judicial branch, who may be reviewing that information for prosecution, maybe local government, law enforcement that are reviewing that push up to the DA's office. So there's, there's some definitions in this law, there's some exceptions in this law, and there's some reporting requirements that we have. You have an attached resolution that satisfies the requirements of the new law, and we would recommend your approval.
Happy to answer any questions.
Entertained a motion to approve the resolution.
Agreed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Anyone else question? All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. The next item is completing access to the broadband memorandum of understanding.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Board. Page 240. So you'll recall that this board previously designated a half a million dollars in CARES funds and $4 million in ARPA funds to use as matches for broadband. Great Grant 1, which our spectrum use 148,169 of those funds. Great Grant 2 with Bright Speed use a half a million. And Great, and Cab Grant 1 with Bright Speed designated 2.7 million. House Bill 10, which was vetoed by the governor because it had some other stuff in it, which was recently overridden by the General Assembly, removed that match for Cab 1, and instead used as state funds for that because they were in a bind, they needed to get those funds spent. Of all those programs so far, it's serving 4,083 locations in Beaufort County with fiber. So of the 4.5 million that the county designated with its ARPA funds and its CARES funds for broadband, you have 3.3 million 851,831 remaining. There is a memo, an MOU attached between the county and the department, the North Carolina Department of Information Technology, which would designate those remaining funds as a match for future broadband grants, and it meets the obligation requirement deadlines by U.S. Treasury because we don't want to send any of this money back. Those funds would be held in escrow by the state and only used for broadband projects in Beaufort County. So they would match up against future grants that would come, whether that be Cab 2, or whether that be B projects that are coming down from the federal government. There's still a ton of money that's coming down from the federal government. So this would allow us to, to use those funds that the board has previously designated. We'd recommend your approval of the MOU, and we'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Can't, oh, excuse me, go ahead. Can't we use some of those funds for some of these water repair jobs that we need to be making?
You've designated some of those funds for water repair jobs already. This is the $4 million of CARES money that you set aside specifically for broadband.
Yeah, but I'm saying, can't we back that up and use some of that money for water repair jobs, like going under some of these creeks where we got broken lines?
You could, but you have money designated already for that that you haven't spent yet.
In other words, what you're saying is we, we have already appropriated funds to make all the repairs in water that need to be made?
I, I, I don't know what there are, I mean, there could be repairs, you could put in loops across this entire county and spend more.
No, I'm not talking about loops. I'm talking about, I know of several places where there's pipelines that run under creeks.
Right. The ones that were designated initially, there's funding set aside for that, that this board put on hold.
Yeah.
We haven't moved on with that, but there is funding for the ones that were designated, that the Public Works Director stood in front of this board and said, this, 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 and some of those included some, some pipe, some borings that would have fixed some.
Yeah. Well, you said the word "hold." Do we have any of those water repair projects that are on hold right now?
All of those are on hold right now.
Okay.
Waiting on the board.
This is going to be a dumb question, why?
That's what this board told us to hold on.
But you're still sitting on the money, right?
Oh, yeah, we have money. We hadn't spent it, no.
We, you know, we need to, maybe we take this up at the next meeting, if not at this one, but we need to go forward with that. I remember when we voted to do that, but I don't remember the particulars. But we need to go ahead and release those funds, and let's start making these repairs.
I believe the reason that those projects were tabled is because the Public Works Director was trying to wrap up some DQ projects before taking on some more projects.
Well, the Public Works Director works for us, so we need to direct the Public Works Director to start directing, and let's get this, let's get these projects going. Well, what they do with these things is they're, she doesn't do the design on them, they're farmed out to private engineering firms. It's just a matter of letting a contract to somebody to do the design work. So, I mean, what's the holdup?
I bet it's been in our favor because prices are coming down.
Brian, would it be appropriate to have Christine just bring us up to date on?
We can certainly have her come back.
For some reason, there was one, there was one item in there that was a pretty, was pretty large, and we were waiting to get the pricing on it?
So that was related to the SCADA system, and some of that's been approved under some state grant funds. They, they gave you a change order on those recently that allowed you to take some of those funds and use it for SCADA, so we wanted to see what was left over there.
Yeah.
But yes, that was one of the big ones.
Yeah. See what we need to do about getting this stuff moving.
So we're happy to do that, have her come back and talk about those water projects. This one, however, is relating to the broadband, and, and again, I'll answer any questions.
Right. We did get a motion and a second?
Not yet.
Okay. Entertained a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And we got a second. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay, all those in favor of approving the recommended memorandum of understanding as it relates to the North Carolina Department of Information Technology? Raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay. Katie, I think you're up. Hmm? Pardon?
Yes, sir.
Katie, you're up.
As you're aware, we have committees and boards, which you're, you guys sit on, there are listed on the page that in front of you. We do have two vacancies that were left by Commissioner Rebels that would need to be filled. The rest of them can be changed, you can stay the same, you can mix and match. We just need a list of who's going to be on what boards this year and, and an approval.
Okay.
Okay. My nominee, Candy Dunn, for the Finance Committee. Water Committee, too.
All right, how about Water Committee, too?
You can add Water Committee, too, if he wants it, yeah.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna do them as a group. We'll do them as a group, same.
You good with it, right? I don't know if Water Committee is going to want me.
Well, you, I mean, it's, I mean, that's, that's where you, that's where you learn about, it's an enterprise. It's an enterprise system, and, you know, we would, I would ask you as the chairman, if you would serve on both.
I would like to propose, with this Economic Development Advisory Committee, with some of the things that we've been doing, that we put Stan Desbridge on that committee along with Commissioner Booth.
All right, we're going to add Stan to that. Any other changes you want to see? All right, entertain a motion that we?
A question of Mr. Bryant, Mr. on the RPO, the TAC. Mr. Rev Hope was on that, can he still serve on that?
Um, not really. The TAC is the, is the Technical Advisory Committee, which is made up of elected officials, so he would not be able to continue to serve on that.
Well, I was, I was the alternate. I was, I was thought serving since I've been called every week. If sorry with you, Mr. Chair.
That's fine. That's fine.
I'm sorry, I was.
I said, I said, since I'm always on call, I would, I would serve, and you could get another alternate if you.
So, so the way it's set up right now is for the TAC, Commissioner Waters has his name in as the elected official, you serving as the alternate, and then the, the TCC is the Technical Coordinating Committee, which is typically made up of staff, and I serve in that role as the staff representative to the TCC, and then you're serving as the alternate to that.
Are you, what?
We're making a change.
We'll just make a change.
No, I mean, if, if you got it covered, it's fine. I was under the impression that it was Commissioner Rev Hope that I was the alternate for. Well, I'm good with it. Stay let you off.
Well, I mean.
No, you still let you off.
I, I don't mind being the alternate.
No, no, you go ahead. I mean, no, you go ahead.
Okay, okay.
I was just thinking it was, I was just thinking it was him, since I always call me on Thursdays and Fridays.
Right, right. Okay. Katie, any other questions on this?
No.
All right. Entertained a motion to approve the committee assignments.
Motion to approve.
And we have a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, gentlemen. We're down to add to the Board of Commissioners suggested meeting calendar.
Yes, sir. As you're aware, we have to, we are obligated to hold at least one meeting per month, and I believe that has to be on the. per month, and I believe that has to be on the first month, it's usually held on the first Monday of each month. You are provided with a list of what those dates would be, as well as the planning retreat suggestion, budget workshops, and what your upcoming conferences are. I worked around all of those conferences and budgets and all that kind of stuff, and those are the dates I'm recommending for next year.
Okay, hopefully, everybody's good with these dates. Now, entertain a motion that, got a motion and, and a second?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to mention that, as nobody knows what their future will be, and some things change from time to time, and if, we may elect at some point to make allowances for one commissioner or another if something should come up. I mean, we, we know that these dates are not etched in stone, but we'll try to do whatever we can to meet on these dates.
Okay. What we tried to do in the past is we have to do it at the previous, previous meeting, at the previous meeting.
Absolutely. Just wanted to reiterate that.
Yeah.
So it would be understood.
But we would also ask the commissioners if there's anything personally or anything you, you're trying to do that you try to keep these in mind too.
Yes, absolutely.
So that we don't have to change, but we understand if we have to change. Okay, do we, do we get a motion?
We did.
Do we vote?
Not yet.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay, we're done to, let's see, the attorney interviews, Commissioner Richardson.
Well, what I'd like to do is to make arrangements for whoever we decide to interview, who will be picking the attorney candidates that we interview?
So the, so as we sent out a notice to the board, we posted that, letters, request for letters of interest, we sent that to the board, all the board members got that. We've had it posted for several weeks now, and the closing on that was Friday at 5:00, and we received one letter of interest from a local firm. It's a board appointment, that's why it was sent to the board members for y'all to, if y'all had attorneys that you knew of, I assumed you would want a local attorney to do that, but those, that's the only letter of interest we received, was one.
Okay, then that one would be interviewed on the night?
That was the recommendation from the chairman, that they, that we schedule a meeting at 2:00 PM on Monday, December of the night, to interview, actually, it's Jones and Sassnet, a local firm here in Washington, for the board to have the opportunity to interview them on that date at that time, and then I guess my recommendation to you would be to, I mean, you've got to have it done by the end of the month. So if you're satisfied after that meeting, you can vote to a point, we could work to try to put together a contract, you could, if you were satisfied with it, you could, you could vote to do that, or you could call a special meeting sometime before the end of the month to do that.
Okay, what I would like to do is for them to be notified that whoever that attorney is in that firm that would be representing the county, that those commissioners that wanted to have a private interview with that individual before we vote on accepting them.
The only recommendation I would make to you, Commissioner Richardson, is the board acts and speaks as one, so that would just be my recommendation to you.
Well, that's why I'm bringing this up at this board meeting. I, I don't have any problems with, we only have one, but I would like to see the people that want to do that have it before a meeting on December of the 9th. Why would that be? Why would that be? What, number one, we're trying to get it closed out before the end of the year. What you're saying is we're gonna vote to accept them on the 9th? Well, you, you, you want to have a personal interview with them, I'm just saying, I don't have a problem with it if you do it before the commissioners do the interview on December the 9th. Well, I need, I need the approval of the board in order to make it work.
Yeah. I don't, I mean, I don't.
I'll second that. This is motion.
Okay.
I mean, I don't have a problem with you interviewing the person, but you don't need our approval, I mean, you don't need our approval.
I'm afraid that I do.
I mean, because whether, I mean, because it's a board appointment, and the thing about it is, you can, you can go tomorrow, you can go tomorrow and talk to them, isn't anything anybody on this board can do?
Well, I need the approval of the board in order to do this. This is a board action, I'm requesting it for a specific reason, and I don't understand why anybody should object to giving the board approval to do this, because it's the board that's, that's, that's gonna be hiring the attorney, it's the board that is in charge of the interviews.
Well, you just, you just verified my point. The board is not going, you're going, you can go tomorrow, I said, you can go tomorrow and talk to Sass and Jones, tomorrow, nobody.
I don't want to do that, I want the approval of the board to be inside, for me to be inside of the process of selecting an attorney. So, I have, here again, I don't, if, if I wanted to go talk to her, I'd just go talk to her. I mean, I don't see why we've gotten to approve that, I'm just saying that do it before, get your questions answered before we have her meet. Does this mean the board is approving?
We hadn't voted yet, because I'm not the board.
No, no, we hadn't. The board is not gonna approve it?
I mean, you can suck it.
You gotta count the votes?
No, no.
Well, I made a motion, okay?
Suck it.
All right? Okay, and the board, for the board to approve this or not, not to approve this, one or the other? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay, I'm gonna disclose something. I have a bad relationship with that law firm.
I thought they.
They have been involved, no, it wasn't that law firm, because I didn't know who it was, this, this was put on before I knew who we'd be interviewing, so you can't target the specifics on the law firm, you don't know what you're talking about.
You just said it, you got a problem.
I will never recommend this law firm to represent the county. Okay.
Like I said before, put the motion out there, you can, if, all you can do is count.
All right, economic development discussion, Commissioner Richardson.
The, the board has not been closely enough involved in the economic development process, and consequently, the situation at Chalkawinity is somewhat of a problem, and we need to decide tonight whether we can go forward with that process or not. I don't know whether there's anything else on here that has to do with economic development. Well, I got an economic development discussion after this, but, you know, one of the things that's on my mind is how does the board connect more with the Economic Development Board so that the entire board has their hands on what's going on with economic development? Because I think we're just too far removed from what's going on with economic development.
You want to respond?
I'm happy to respond to it, I mean, I think it's set up in a way that's, the same way your other committees and boards are set up. You have a liaison to that committee, or you have a liaison who's, who you've talked about tonight, that Commissioner Deathridge is going to be on that board, that advisory board, Commissioner Booth, you have people on the Water Committee, those commissioners are responsible for having those conversations and they need to bring something back to the board, they put it on the agenda and talk about it.
Well, you may have answered, you may have answered the problem, maybe with Commissioner Deathridge on there, we'll get more information than we're getting in the past, because I think if, if companies knew that the board was more actively involved, then we may be doing more with economic development. And along the lines with that discussion, let's call, call that particular issue settled for the moment. The, what is the situation at Chalkawinity? Is there, are they rezoning that, or is there anything going on over there insofar as making progress with being able to get some industry over there? Well, that's, that's item number four under Deathridge. Oh, is that Deathridge? Well, then I will defer to Deathridge, because I got lost on there. Your next one is environmental management. Yeah, and the manager brought us a, an information document. Now, the reason, the last time that this was reviewed in a big way was about 10 years ago, and we wound up, the county wound up going to Raleigh, and we got changes in the law made in Raleigh because of this. This review is, is important to economic development in this area, because as an example, I do the permits that are involved in this, so I know something about it. They can make one little twitch, one little wiggle, and all of a sudden, you're gonna be knocked out of a lot of economic development. We need to be closely involved in this, because the, those who want to change this, and I have, by the way, I have served on that Oversight Committee Board for the whole district, so I have a little bit of experience with this. But the last time this thing came up for review, a job was, was worked on, on the board in which the manager wound up signing off on the changes that were made in the law. And this stuff needs to come before the board, we need to be involved in this. You can knock out a lot of economic development really quick with this. For those of you that don't know what this is about, this is a basin-wide nitrogen phosphorus management program that was put in because sewage treatment plants, but essentially, sewage treatment plants within the basin were overflowing sewage into the Pamlico Tar River system, and we had algae blooms, we had nutrient, we had nutrient excess, and this is where we got the stormwater ponds that we've got, this is where we got a whole lot of other things that we have got involved in agriculture and a whole, and a whole host of things. So it affects everything economically in the district. It is vastly more important than what it looks like it is. So we need to figure, find out when this committee is meeting, we need to have a representative who can go to these committee meetings and sit in and see what's going on, or we're gonna come out on the short end of the stick again, because the system is run by, number one, environmental activist involvement, and number two, the cities that are within the drainage district that have sewage treatment plants, all have representatives that sit on this board and are advisory to the state on this, and that make a lot of decisions that, that affect economic development in this area. So I would like for the manager to determine when this committee is having its meetings in Raleigh, and we need a representative, a commissioner, I'll do it if nobody else will, because I know what's going on with those birds, to go and sit in this meeting and see what's going on. Otherwise, you're gonna come up with some laws and you're gonna be crammed in front of you to pass with no notice and no opportunity to lobby for or against them.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I think if Hood's willing to go up there and sit and act as a de facto lobbyist for us, at least to bring back information for us, very wise and knowledgeable information, I think we should pay for him to go up there anytime he wishes, pay for his per diem.
Yes.
So, so some information, this is related to the wastewater discharge requirements rule for the Tar PAM Basin Strategy. As you, most of you gentlemen, I'm sure know, Adam Waters, who's retired Public Works Director for the City of Washington, is the Executive Director of the Tar PAM Basin Association, I just had a conversation with him the other day, he is happy to come and talk to y'all about this, but essentially what he said to me was, there is an agreement, there's an MOU between the Basin Association and DEQ on the discharge requirements, and this rule change is essentially formalizing that MOU. We're not a part of the Tar PAM Basin Association, because we don't have a wastewater discharge, we're not a wastewater, we don't have wastewater treatment plant. But Adam's happy to come and talk to y'all, I can get him on the next agenda to come speak to y'all about this, if that helps, and then you can make a decision about whether you want to send the commissioner to Raleigh to advocate for these, these, these changes.
Well, I didn't not realize that Adam was chairman of that board now, when I was on it, I think this, he's not chairman, he's a member of the board.
He is the executive director, if you look at the next to the last page, David Springer, who's a PE, is chairman of the association, and Adam Waters is the executive director.
Oh, the executive director, okay. Well, you know, when you cram this stuff in front of me at the meeting, and I don't have time to read it, I'm not gonna look very intelligent, and that's, that's one of the reasons it's crammed in front of me at the meeting.
No, it wasn't, it was put in front of you because you asked for it.
I asked for it, but.
You did.
But, but you're berating me.
No, I'm not.
Because I didn't know who the executive director was.
I am not.
And this was stuck in front of me at this meeting, I don't have time to read it, and since you're on that subject.
I am not.
That, since you're on that subject, I'm gonna complain again that there are a lot of things that come up with no notice, like this report on the Audit Committee came up with no notice, crammed in front of you, fortunately, we weren't asked to vote on it, but that kind of stuff should stop. But I know Adam Waters pretty well, I don't mind calling him and talking to him and coming back at the next meeting and we'll talk about this thing again and see what's going on. But that, that group that has the sewage treatment plants is only a part of the whole picture of what, when you say DEQ is doing this, they can change the rules for the whole basin.
And I think Adam will be able to explain that to the board, because his, his conversation to me, and he can come and he can express it to the entire board, you can ask all the questions you want, his indication to me was that there is an MOU, and, and you get a chance to go through this and look at it, and I think he's telling me the truth, there's an MOU that was in place with the Basin Association, this essentially, he says, is formalizing that MOU because they wanted to get it on paper and make it formal under the rules instead of just having an MOU. But he's happy to come and speak, y'all can go all through that, ask any questions you want, and then you can decide what you want to do.
Well, that's fine, we'll take this up again at the next meeting. Go ahead. Why don't you invite him to come in and speak on it? Okay, we're done to Chalkawinity Industrial Site Update, Commissioner Deathridge.
Yes, yeah, I'm seeking information from the manager, since I know you were working with Chalkawinity on that, here publicly, we can talk about it here in the meeting, so the public will know what's going on. But I'm curious as to the position that Chalkawinity has taken and to what extent this board needs to move so that we can correct the situation on the south side of the river, where we have 277 acres with wetlands surrounding it, nice high ground in the middle, got a railway, got Highway 17 coming down, got gas, and we haven't been able to sell anything for the last 16 years. And I think the number one problem, as I see it, is we are zoned light industrial rather than heavy industrial, and that's something we need to get fixed by hook or by crook, whatever it takes, we can talk to them, we can work with them however we can, and if that doesn't work, we'll figure out something else to do.
Brian?
It's critical, it's critical, critical if we're gonna own property, that we be able to use that property.
Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I, I sent the board an email after the, after the zoning hearing that was held, I believe we had our meeting and it was the next night from our last board meeting, I gave you an update and said that it was gonna be the next night if any of y'all wanted to come. I was the only one there, no one spoke in opposition to it, the board, the Board of Commissioners at the town of Chalkawinity did not act on it, they wanted some additional time to think about it. I sent in a request to the, to their planner, who is from the Mideast Commission, Mideast Commission handles their zoning, and I asked him where that stood, they have proposed some language about maybe subdividing the property and making one portion of it light industrial, one portion of it heavy industrial. I don't think that that's in the county's best interest to do that, because it would limit our ability. The, they still have not moved on it, they opened the public hearing, again, like I say, there were, there were no comments from the public except for the comments that I made, and we're waiting to hear from them, they closed the public hearing so they could take action on it at any time after that. But again, they would, they wanted to make, according to Seth, they said they might want to make a few minor changes in a few of the uses in H1, which is the heavy industrial, and then maybe allow for a heavy industrial zoning on the west side of the railroad and keep the light industrial on the, on the east side. But again, I, for this board's perspective, I would not recommend to you that you, that you agree to a, to a subdivision, because you would have to subdivide, you have to, you would have to physically subdivide the property to have different zoning, you can't just draw an imaginary line and say, it's zoned here to here. If we were to subdivide the property, that would satisfy the zoning issue, but then you're locked into how you can do what on different pieces of property. If you had some company come in and say, I want to take the whole thing, then that could be an issue, so. So we're, you know, my, my, I reached out to him to say, where are we? And he said, I'm not sure where we are right now, they're still, they're still having that conversation, so, so that's kind of where things stand. We're, we're continuing to market it like we always have, and we've got some interest, we had. we had a, we had an Oversight Visit, a couple, a couple of weeks ago, so we continue to market and, and push that property as, as best we can.
Did they give you any idea or understanding when they might get back with you?
No, I mean, they, I guess their, their next board meeting is, it may be tomorrow night, it may be tomorrow night, I'd have to look, I think it's tomorrow night, I think theirs is the first Tuesday of the month. I don't know if it's on their agenda, Seth said that he was gonna have some conversations with, with them to see kind of where they were, but haven't had any additional.
Will you get back with us, will you contact them after the board meeting and get back with us for the next meeting? Thank you very much.
Okay, Stan.
Yeah. Last one, this will probably be the last institutional corruption highlight that I'm gonna do, the election is over. And, you know, we haven't talked since the election, I was shocked, did it win as well as it did. The gaslighting of America failed, and the future of the democratic socialist propagandistic media has failed right along with it. And they've lost a lot of respect, they're losing a lot of viewership, they've lost a lot of respect. What has happened up in, with the executive branch, and then Congress to a degree, but especially the executive branch, which we found out just yesterday that Hunter Biden has been pardoned, after lying Joe Biden, America's first idiot president, said he would never pardon his son. Well, he's been pardoned now, and that's all well and good, that's fine, that just opens up the door for January 6 people to be pardoned, and, oh, yeah, well, there's not a thing that the democratic socialists can say about it, nor do the democratic socialist propagandist media, nobody's gonna care. They have, they have cried wolf way too many times, hey, Hitler won the election, and now he will govern, and he is seeking to do so in a very affirmative manner. I don't know, I know there's gonna be screaming a lot, about a lot of his picks, because he's really picked some lines to go up there and fight for the regular people in America, and I really appreciate that. But institutional corruption is over, at least as far as the election goes, the media, which has lost all respect, journalists, mommies and daddies have paid a lot of money for these people to get journalistic degrees and work at some of these big legacy media types, and they've lost any consideration of fairness, any consideration of intelligence, any consideration of doing what's right by the people they are sworn to inform. So it's pretty much over for them. Media in America is gonna go back to its roots, it'll be, it'll be, go back to the town crier before we ever listen to ABC, NBC, NPR, PBS, The Atlantic, all these, name one, they're finished.
Both coming down?
Well, no, we do rather well. We do quite well, by the way, and we're gonna do a whole lot better, because, yeah. It's good, it's good to be open, and it's good to be free, and if you understand the First Amendment, that's the way it works. And I'm done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Katie, would you read us?
Yeah, just real quick, on that closed session, I need to actually ask that we change that from, from a personnel consideration to, to exception under 153-381011A7, instead of personnel.
Okay.
What is 153-8101?
To plan conductor here, reports concerning investigations of alleged criminal misconduct.
Okay, need, need, need a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
Add a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. You, you're, you're welcome to stay right in here, we're going in, we're going in the other room.
I'd need a motion to come out of closed session?
Second.
Add a second. All those in favor coming out of closed session, raise your right hand. Okay. I would add to the last item, the commissioners' comments.
I have none.
Okay, I have, I have one, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy Year, even though we'll see each other sometime between 9:00 and 10:00.
They would, they want you to enjoy your retirement.
Absolutely.
Ditto's.
Ditto.
Come back every meeting.
So, Mr. Chairman, I heard you ask about your upcoming interview meeting with the, with the firm that's expressed interest to be on their county attorney. I know you have the Solem War meeting after that, so if you, my suggestion to you would be to recess this meeting until whatever time you want to meet, we can certainly let this firm know that it's not 2:00, you could push it back later if that's more appropriate for the board, so that you don't have a short, you don't have an hour or two, and then you gotta wait another two hours, and then have your meeting with the Solem War Board. If you want to push it back to 3:00, 4:00, whatever, whatever works for y'all, I think the meeting for the Solem War Board starts at 5:30. I don't know how long you anticipate you need for that conversation, but I would suggest that you just recess this meeting until that time on Monday, December the 9th.
Would, would 4:00 be okay?
That's up to the board.
Okay, I, we will take a recess, and we will.
Won't you tell them just for now?
No, no, you, you're gonna recess the meeting until 4:00 PM?
How long will you have to meet for 4:00 until?
Well, it, it would give us some.
5:30. We have lunch. How long will you have to meet this afternoon?
The dinner, okay. All right, we're gonna recess until Monday, December the 9th at 4:00, okay? Good evening.